I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's a public comment time. Gilbert Thomas is here. Gilbert, come up to the microphone, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Gilbert Thomas, Regional President, Bank Iowa here in Clorinda. And after last week's supervisors meeting and the article that came out with KMA, I thought I needed to come and set the record straight. The KMA report had a few accurate statements regarding Bank Iowa and your abatement situation. Those accurate statements would include that we did spend a significant amount of money on our new location and the surrounding properties over there. And then another accurate statement is that we did gift the building at 101 North 15th to the city of Clorinda. After that, I think I need to set the record straight. Bank Iowa provided a warranty deed to the city of Clorinda on August 14th, 2020. Attached to that deed was a check to the Page County Treasurer's Office for $20,082. This check represented $17,828 for a full year of property taxes on 101 North 15th and a lot north of that building. And $2,254 for the taxes that would have been due for the month of July 2020 and the first 15 days of August 2020. The check for $20,082 represented all property taxes prorated to the date of possession by the city on August 14th, 2020. I just wanted to clear this up. The Bank Iowa did pay all the real estate taxes owed to the date of property. At 101 North 15th was gifted and deeded to the city of Clorinda. I'll leave it to the county. The city decided the taxes due after the city took possession, but I needed to clear that record.
Thank you, Gilbert.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other public comment from online?
Hearing them, we'll have our engineers report. Let our engineers show up. Must have got engineered. So while we wait on JD, look at these claims. Go.
Thanks for coming in and clarifying.
Yeah, thank you, Gilbert.
Frustrated that we did our part.
Yes.
Paying a lot of taxes.
Sorry about the poor communication on this end. You know, it was kind of not to excuse it because we were, we made this situation, it's on us. But we're kind of just looking forward, trying to figure out, do we abate, do we not abate since the city hasn't since their, so it kind of was, it was a sidebar, but it was a terrible sidebar. And sure, sure, sorry about any confusion.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
We don't have this chair.
Yes, yes, sir. Is that correct? Just assuming true there?
Yes.
And Kristi, I would ask, we, I see in our mail, we have an invitation to an event on September 2nd. When, since mail comes in irregularly, when we get a mail in between meetings, if it's not too inconvenient, could you guys let us know?
Alrighty, well, Mr. King, we are ready for you. Well, good morning. Morning. Fine morning in Page County. Yes. And the King House still has kids and extra kids and grandkids. A whole bunch was in and out over the weekend. Except the bunch who's bad. The crews are on five eight, starting this week. We've got blades out except for one. Long Paul's going on the free trucks. We got a truck called Rip Rat to the pipe crew. Who's continues to be down on J 55. And we have some issues with the locates there. A regular locator guy with the one call, Iowa one call. He's been off. And there's a new person there and there's for example, the last site was cleared. Utilities according to the the message, but when we dug, we discovered the hard way, a big 50 pair telephone line. But because it was labeled cleared, it's the locator's responsibility as far as liability issues. Anyway, just trying to sort that out. Hey, Brad, your crew. Is Uber West still? We've moved from a guy, one of the guys, all owners. Freddie Patrick Cruz moved over to the pipe crew. For a while. We don't have a mower going today, but we, we are cutting trees and brush over hanging things. And in anticipation of harvest. Our lone John Deere motivator is in Omaha with some engine issues and the dynamic compression on one cylinder. It's a they were able to do that by just hooking up the computer, but they're fixing to do, take out some injectors and do compression tests the old fashioned way. This may turn into an engine rebuild. We have a couple of other vehicles in Omaha waiting on parts. Jamie has his specifics on those. The wheel did come in on a mower, so we'll have we have one mower down here at the dealer. And the other side mower just got the wheel in, should be operational later on today. And the good news is next week, the motivator that was doing the rebuild up in Minnesota, Minneapolis should be back with us. And then we'll switch the spare, which is taking the place of number two, will bring the spare out. And the guy who runs number six in the south central area here can have that machine. To, well, that's the spare. So tins it down, that's what it's used for. But that's finished grinding the rock into the Brattyville stretch last week. They're over on Northborough. They got to grind through Main Street of Northborough. Put, put some rock in there today. We ground the rock into the Northborough stretch last fall. Then of course, we suspended the job till it restarted this fall. And they'll be driving, grinding in cement powder starting tomorrow, scheduled those as planned. And the Iowa State Research Bunch will be back in the county tomorrow. Then we'll have, I anticipate some other folks coming to observe our work later in the, well, it'll take all week to grind in the cement powder. Then when it's time for the auto seal, which once again is more oil and a thicker lift of aggregate on instead of seal. So the half inch chip seal, we're going to use a three quarter inch aggregate. Well graded, which means all those particle sizes are there, not just the half inch. And so it will be a thicker auto seal, so it takes more oil, it takes more roll weight. And there'll be some visitors in to observe that. But out of Page County's building. Project development continues and the reports due next week to this, the state and then when when they approve that, then I'll furnish the board a copy. Next Monday and Tuesday, we'll be doing another iteration of fox seal up on J 20 East of US 71. That this time for the first time in years, Taylor County will take that fox seal on there at 148. So they can you recall, oh, 10, 11 years ago, Taylor County did a large bond issue. They did a bunch of asphalt paving. So it's all it was all done and they did 30 miles of resurfacing all at the same time. And it's about time for them to do some maintenance work on that, so it's not the, it's a final concern to you, but the neighboring counties adopted some of our practices. Later this month, I do a plan on attending main kits in Missouri, Iowa, Nebraska, Kansas. Gathering of Iowa officials, local, state and federal officers. Or officials down at, down at St. Joe. Last year they canceled it. But we're close and we like, like attend that, see what's going on in the other states. What are your questions about the engineer's evidence?
I just wanted to say I did go out and look at the question on E Avenue. I went every way around it to every access point. I couldn't see any tracks that looked. I saw pickup tracks down through there, but I didn't see anything.
So they were not quite as bad a ruts.
I didn't see what we had reported, so I will talk to Mr. Carmichael and let him know that that I don't know what he saw.
Thank you.
So have you, you, I know you've been out to look at the area. We got a letter from the audience. And have you, have you talked to Mr. Audi at this point?
I haven't talked to Mr. Audi, no.
Okay.
But I need to make sure we've, we've been blading through there. Now there's there's some circumstances about that stretch of road. We don't always play that road routinely, just when it's needed, of course. In the fall before harvest is one of those times. I want to make sure we get to that road. That's, you know, it's open, ready, loaded in the fall.
What is number 24 or number 45? What are those?
Say again?
In Omaha, what is number 24 or number 45?
Uh, 24 is the truck tractor.
The 14, 2000.
The, the old one.
It's back up there.
Right, it's, we, it was in there last week. So, you know, through another, another $7,000 before we, we got to get it running before we sell it.
What's 45?
It's one of the tandems. International.
What's wrong with that?
It had the power into the control box, the tower that runs the hydraulics.
So I assume that on, whatever your number two, they trailer that back to us.
Right.
Was that part of the, the redelivery of it? Was that part of what we paid for already or is that an additional? I'm just kind of curious, additional charge?
I, I, I don't recall if we hauled it to Atlantic or
Oh, okay.
I think they may have fixed it up here.
Okay.
But, but I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, okay. Not that big of a deal. A big deal, we're going to have it back.
Yes.
So.
That's good. And then, then I'd like to, to use, you know, there's unspent money in last fiscal year in the new equipment line. At some point, when we do a budget amendment, I'd like to move that money in this year to take care of this rebuilding of the motivator. Right.
Kind of like we talked last week.
Yeah, great. We talked about it when we, when we chose to get
And we talked a little bit last week, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Did they get the chains on it?
I haven't heard about the chain.
So, yeah, okay. And I'm sure if they took delivery on the chains, they would install them.
Correct. And when the chains come up, they will bring them down and put them all here.
All right. Thank you, JD. Have a good day. Oh, one of the, there is one other quick question. Are you back to five days?
Yes.
Okay.
He was back to five days.
Five, five days, yeah.
The office never changes. The office doesn't change.
Right. But i- is Labor Day, was that the?
Yes, Labor Day was a storm. So this is their first week of five days.
Five days. Well.
So, you know, we, we minimize the the, the pain of the eight hour holiday pay versus ten. This one holiday every day.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I still have, I still have Cedar Ave bunch at the house. And we're in a state of chaos with a little house renovation.
Oh, boy. Really be chaotic if you're the one doing the renovation.
No, no, I have this fire. This is, this is hard for refinishing. I've been stripping the carpet and pad, well, and sun and log. And moving furniture away from three rooms at a time, and we live there.
Not fun.
So we're laboring on Labor Day, just not here.
Yeah, right. Alan, do you like coffee?
I've still got a whole thing. It's still too hot to bring two of us.
It's not too bad. Alrighty. Okay, 8:45, discussed and approved tax abatement 323 West La Perla, Clorinda, Clorinda Regional Health Center. Resolution 402021. Thoughts on this issue? I've got the tax bill here.
I think other than where the, I believe the pilots live, this would be the first property that the hospital has owned. Or housing, correct?
Well, they, they previously gave that picture to the Southwest. There's that little house. That's, that used to be when Air Methods was in town.
Yes, yes.
It used to be their house. And I don't know who built that. That was a hospital. I, I think a hospital did. But now that Air Methods has moved out, they have a different service provider. And staffing changes, I'm assuming. So they purchased this house for them. I talked, you know, we got the request from Joni Christiansen. I, I called Joni last week just to kind of go back over it. At first glance, it's, my, my gut reaction is, well, the helicopter company is a private, not, it's a private for-profit company. And where do you draw the line? The other side of that argument, and I thought Joni brought up a great point. With, you know, we were at ISAC last week and, and it's no secret that rural emergency medical services are under stress. I mean, they, they don't make much money. And there continues to be a movement to try to make that a, an essential service where it can be levied for to, to make sure that you've got these services out in the country. Joni's point was that the, you know, the, the services of both Shannon and Clorinda had with COVID really took a, took a hit. And having this helicopter in here really does aid both services, take some pressure off of them. So that's kind of their line of argument. You know, it's not a lot of money. It's $2,600 annual tax bill. Which my thought process is that doesn't really solve the financial strain on our emergency services, so I'd, I'd like to see legislation continue to allow for a levy to build some reserves there. Be able to sustain those services. So I don't know. I mean, I could go either, I could go either way on this account with you. On one hand, it didn't make a lick of sense. On the other hand, it does. Your own thoughts?
Does this go in the rear also?
Pardon me?
Does this go on the previous taxes also or not?
Well, this is through the transaction date whenever
Whenever they took over.
Yeah, whenever they took over. They bought it sometime in 20. So taxes are up to date. But this is the, the bill that is due September 1.
And the hospital thought of as part of their agreement with the helicopter, so they have a place for them to live.
Right.
Okay, so it's for the
Helicopter pilots.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
No, I, I thought it was for doctors.
No.
Okay.
No, it's for the helicopter pilots. It's not for private.
Yeah.
It's a private, that they said contract.
Right, right.
So to me, that complicates it somewhat. I mean, I have private for-profit, you know, the hospital.
Is a for-profit.
No, the hospital is municipal.
So it's completely
Yeah, it's a weird case. There one, it's my understanding, one of four municipal hospitals in Iowa. And they get zero tax revenue. You know, it's not a county hospital.
Right.
Like Montgomery or Cass. City of Clorinda, to my knowledge, does not financially support the hospital. And I could be wrong and I'll stand corrected if that is incorrect, but so it's a unique, it truly is a unique situation. I guess one thing that that I throw out there for discussion is maybe this situation where as long as the helicopter company is in town providing service to our EMS throughout the county, that we could consider abating it, but then don't exempt it permanently and do it on a, on an annual basis. You know, Air Methods was here for, I don't know, seven, eight, I'm, I'm just guessing, seven, nine years and they left. We were without a helicopter. And you know how business goes. There's no guarantee about tomorrow. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Whatever you guys have in mind. But the ultimate answer has to be some, some tax relief from some funding sources. These, uh these emergency services, we're, we're blessed in
Right.
Page County to have two hospitals. We're blessed to have the first responders that we have. But you can't, as we heard in ISAC, you know, it's an aging population, number one statewide. I think that's true here. How do you sustain it?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the tax abatement at 323 West La Perla Drive. The Clorinda Regional Health Center, resolution 40 dash 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the abatement and a second. Was your motion intended to abate it permanently or to?
Let's, I'll, I'll make the addition of reviewing it each year as long as they're utilizing it for EMS helicopter service.
Okay, is that suitable? Do you dig it or?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay. All right. So does that make sense in commotion? Christine?
For the public?
For the, yeah, good of our county, yes.
Right.
Public safety.
Alrighty. Well, we have a motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing them, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right, I put on the agenda this letter of intent with ISG. I told you I wanted to do a little more research, which I did. And that's why I got it on the agenda, hoping you guys would amp it up. The big concern that I had going in was are, is there any eminent domain involved in this? Because that, to me, changes the outlook. And it's my understanding that no, it's a private project. There's no eminent domain, so it's totally up to landowners. If this pipeline gets built or doesn't get built. What this letter of intent does, as you heard from Mr. DiBalla last week, is it it basically sanctions them to be the inspectors to ensure that it's safe at zero cost to the county or pass.
And those are representative at the meeting. And they're going to come to the meeting.
Right.
Yes.
And they'll be there to answer questions, so we don't have to worry about knowing everything, so to speak. They'll be our representative.
The only thing I can think is, is there somebody else? I mean, I don't know how many people do this, like, you know, sort of like, they seem like they were one of the ones who did most of them.
Yeah, I have no idea. I'm sure there are other companies. But I think what, what I thought I heard him say last week was it's advantageous to the project. I don't know if that matters to us. But if you have a consistent inspection unit rather than three or four different companies along the pipeline, because it could be some discrepancy, you might, you might lose something in that.
And the meeting's on the 14th of August, I mean
October, yes, in Shannon.
Coming up.
Yeah. And I, I've got a customer that he has land in both Mills and Montgomery, and he's got two meetings that he can attend. I know that are, one in Red Oak and then there's one over in Mills County also. He said they've been sending out a lot of letters to everybody that's involved or decide that they, you know. Get that much of those farmers, so.
It's at no cost to have somebody there at the meeting and just know the answer to questions would be valuable.
Well, and I think the bank, there's no cost to us for the service, so.
Will be, will be invoiced, but we'll send that invoice to this company. They'll pay us and we'll pay the vendor. Or the builder.
Yeah. Right, so.
Also this letter of intent, pardon me, this is just a letter of
Yeah, just a letter of intent.
Right.
Pipeline doesn't get built, that, that doesn't matter.
And I'm going to guess that if there was probably somebody else out there, they would have contacted us by now because this has been planned for quite some time.
Several months.
And as we all know, that when you talk about a jail, people keep coming out of the woodwork wanting to do the business. So I'm going to guess that if there was somebody else that was willing to work with this company, they would have. So I'm just assuming, shouldn't do that. I think we're safe to say this might be the one company that's designed to do this. I think we're safe to say this might be the one company that's designed to do this. So is there, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the letter of intent with ISG.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor? There any other discussion? And I, I apologize, don't know the time of the meeting in Red Oak.
Eleven fourteen.
Oh, I don't, seven o'clock, seven o'clock, eleven o'clock in Shan and seven o'clock, I think he said in Red Oak.
Do you know the location in Red Oak?
I did not ask the other day, but.
The library in John Doe?
Yeah, yes, yeah. I bet it's a library in Red Oak.
Probably so.
Or it could be the, I'll find out when once, I'll, I'll, I'll try to figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a month, so.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, I'd call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, motion carries. Go ahead and sign this. So we got two bills on that side. You have, you have any claims over there?
I don't.
You don't? Yeah, this one just needs me. So here's the resolution. Answer vision. Did you need the minutes or?
No, I already read it.
Is it time machine for? To the?
How's the restoration process going? Have you been hearing any comments? Some big books.
I should say digitalization, not restoration.
Yeah, digitalization.
One of us needs to ask Brenda to give a timeline on how long we'll be here.
We need to make sure Brenda knows next week is an evening meeting. She knows, okay.
And I think I will be here. Okay, I was gonna be gone, but I think it's not. I was gonna be on Zoom.
Something happened, I can be here, I'm gonna be here as far as Zoom. The twenty first, I probably will be on Zoom. Luanne has her second knee surgery that morning, so.
Okay. Excited?
I, yes, in fact. Not quite as apprehensive as the first one.
Uh-oh, somebody's walking through the right way. All right, so do we have a motion to approve our claims as presented?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. All right, um, I guess we kind of did that backward board communication. Well, let's do the minutes, any. Uh, we have minutes to approve from last Monday and Tuesday. Uh, we could do it all in one motion. Of course, Monday was the Board of Congress Board meeting that we attended, and then Tuesday a regular meeting, so. So everybody had a chance in the game?
Yes.
Okay, uh, somebody'd like to make a motion?
I'll so move.
Second that.
Okay, motion to approve made by Armstrong, second by Holmes for the minutes. I think our meetings on October thirtieth and, or Au- August thirtieth, August thirty first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. All right, board communications. Got a meeting here in the other Human Service Council meeting, invited this, uh, young lady from Suicide Coalition. That took in VA, and I just got an email, she's not gonna be in Lipton, she's gonna see if Denise could, can attend, uh, you know, inform that group would be a good way for them to work.
I had nothing since last week. Wait, what did you think? No, I didn't.
Landfill meeting?
No.
Biggest thing was, was that selling a truck and purchasing a truck, so they're actually going forward with it.
Uh, we received a note from Wallsworth Publishing. Uh, wanting to know if there's any interest in a commemorative book uh, about Page County. Research and work of this quality takes time, so we encourage you to speak with us soon about an anniversary project. For delivery of twenty two or twenty three. I will call then and get information so that you guys can make a, make a decision. Wallsworth, Marceline, Missouri, boyhood home of Walt Disney.
Just played them in basketball once.
Marceline, and they were in our conference too.
Once in a while we drift out of ours and go to them, so.
Don Walt, rest his soul, that company's done very well. All right, uh, any other thing? If not, uh, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nine oh nine, we are adjourned. Thank you.